Mr. Nixon.
Here.
Mrs. Maltman.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Okay, we've got, first of all, the Lacher, I have one here for Lacher subdivision which is unmanaged, that is tabled, that will not be heard this evening, and we'll put in help support here. Actually, we want to do a little organizational meeting. We have David, Dave Maltman was first chairman of the plan, but I'm going to make Dave Maltman to continue as first chair.
Okay.
Give me a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good with that. And we need someone to make a run for the secretary. Okay, he's done a good job. Okay, we have a motion for that in a second.
Okay.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good with that. And I'd like to welcome Peggy Maltman.
Thank you.
This is her first official town meeting right here, we had a joint meeting a couple weeks ago. That was a little taste of what goes on, right? So I think you're going to do just fine here. So welcome.
Thank you.
And let's see, what else have we got here? I think it's here of all the little stuff, let's, we've got four items, first one is Bad Cat Airsoft sign. This is located at 701 Phillips Road, the applicant is David Carey, and requesting a sign approval associated with installation of a 196 square foot building rounded facade sign, 32 square foot monument sign, that reflects the new business, and 2.9 acres at the designated parcel number. This is located in the industrial district under section 92657, code of the town of Huxter. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I am Chris McAllister with McAllister Sign and Huxter, and I'm a contractor for signage for Bad Cat Airsoft, and with me is Scott Carey, he is the owner of the business. As you can see, we are looking for approval for an illuminated monument sign, which is going to be what we call a post and panel, panel sign, so it actually won't have a monument face, and per the town regulations, illumination will have only through the letters, and will have an opaque background, so that the background does not like. Additionally, we're looking for permission to put a sign on the building that's going to replace an existing banner that's been there for about 16 years, and they do plan on using just a banner for that one as well, that won't be illuminated.
Now, you're proposing a sign, pretty much, I looked at it the other day, you've got two posts where there was a sign, correct?
Yeah.
All right, there was a concern by a neighbor, can that sign be moved closer to your driveway? I believe it could.
So that won't be a problem, although it would have popped the door.
Looks like somebody made a trench there, did you put electric wires, electric line in?
There's wiring that was recently put in.
Yeah, that's right. Why don't you just give us your name also, I'm sorry.
Scott Carey.
Okay.
So you're saying the neighbors asking to move the sign to the south?
Yeah, apparently Chris, they're going in all his driveway a lot, and I remember you talked about it when you were in, you know, a year or two ago, whatever it was now.
Okay, so the concern is that they want to identify the driveway a little bit better.
More precise location for it, to identify where your driveway is? It's clear ways from it. I don't think it's a big deal, I mean, it's just a couple of posts.
Which changes the pace.
Yeah, what's happening is traffic is going past the driveway, turning around in the adjacent property, and that creates a problem.
Sure, no, that makes sense. Is there a suggestion how much farther to the driveway that you'd like it moved?
No, it wouldn't be on the south side of the driveway.
So they don't actually own that property to the south?
Okay.
Yeah, that's under the site survey here. Yeah, so they want to know if it's possible to drive it so that people recognize that this is the driveway. No, there's no, we got to. So then, how would they have 15 feet right there, so it's supposed to be 25, so would it be another 25?
If you were, I'm going to guess, I mean, just off the top of my head, recalling what I saw, if you move, also, you don't have a line there, also you have two posts to ground purpose.
Yeah, and actually we're putting two posts.
It should be a simple move, but I'm guessing, you know, 15 feet from the driveway, something along that line?
Okay.
But still, you need to require a setback in the road, obviously.
All right, yep, they can redo.
Okay, so we call it 15 feet, is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
All right, so let's call it 15 feet from the driveway, and it's got a number, but yeah, put the street number on the sign too, it's okay, right on the sign. You haven't had a post that's normally seen, it's small, seven something, I think it is, so, yeah.
Yep, we can certainly do that, thank you.
Okay, okay, so now the sign, what do we got here, something about the sign, are you okay with this? Needs any requirements?
No.
Now, what, where do you propose, where do you show them the site, is it on the screen or is it on the building?
Oh, yeah, sorry, you can't get a picture without the fence in the way, so it's, so there's an existing 16 by 16 foot banner that's on the building, if you've seen the building recently, I think it's still on there, right? And so they do want to just replace that banner that's on the building with their building.
Okay, yeah, needs, that needs some required approval, can you tell us?
Turn to the square foot or just, I just have a question on how it's actually physically attached to the structure.
So the previous owners built a frame, that gets mounted inside, you notice that's on the back too, yeah, so there's actually a frame that goes around the existing banner, and we do something similar to that.
So that would prevent it from blowing in the wind?
So the banner that's on there now, we did about 16 years ago, and it's still there, so however, it's mounted, seems to be working pretty good.
Okay, yeah, as long as it's mounted and not fluttering, impacted by the wind, then it'll be fine.
Okay, is it all right with that? Yeah, all right, go see.
The town wants your plan board to consider request by applicant, David Carey, to install a 196 square foot building mounted facade sign, and a 32 square foot monument sign, Bad Cat Airsoft, located at 701 Phillips Road, and a 2.9 acre parcel has a listing number 06503-1-8. The plan board classifies a proposed action as a type 2 action, under section 617.569, under state department of quality regulations, and our board is not subject to further review.
Can you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll make a motion, I think, other than calling a 15 foot line, please, or where, I don't know if it works. Okay, I need a motion for a sign.
I'll make a motion for Bad Cat Airsoft sign is located at 701 Phillips Road, for approval of a 196 square foot building mounted facade sign, and 32 square foot monument sign. The monument sign is going to be moved to the, within about 15 feet from the driveway, it'll also have these three addresses on it, and, that's the motion.
Okay, need a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're good.
Thank you.
And let's see, number two, Belatera. Belatera, section 2, located near the southwest corner of Salt and Schlegel roads, the applicant is Tom Thomas of 800 Phillips Road LLC, they're requesting final site plan and subdivision approval, associated with the construction of 60 townhomes on a 26.8 acre parcel on the designated parcel. This is located in an MHR residential district under 2699 and 26919, code of the town of Huxter.
Good evening, my name's Mike Ritchie from McAllister Engineering, representing the developer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we are here tonight requesting final approval for section 2 of the Belatera subdivision. Some of you may be familiar with section 1, it's currently under construction now. The board up there shows the limits of section 2, it's kind of split into two phases, 2A and 2B. The reason for that split is so that access could be provided to Salt Road, that would link up with section 1, and then additionally, Meadows 2 subdivision, which is also currently under construction, which has access to Schlegel, if some of you may remember, that ended at a dead end, where the stub road for Belatera would continue. So section 2A would tie in with the stub of Arrow Trail with Meadows 2, and also connecting with section 1. So we felt that was a good way to connect those lots for, you know, emergency vehicle access, and also actually want to ingress and address. A lot of the work for the site, you know, utility wise, infrastructure wise, was done and started in section 1, stormwater ponds were put in place, water mains, sanitary sewers, storm sewers, a lot of rough earthwork was done in section 1. The plan would be to build the road, do the rough earthwork, balance these two areas, connect in with the existing roads, connect the sewer, water main, and then they commenced with building a unit. So the goal would be, pending approval, to start earthwork this spring, et cetera. On this, so they had success with section 1, I believe there's only a few units that are still to be built, so a lot of them already have been activated, so it's been a pretty successful project, and any questions that you have to answer?
Well, there's a few, yeah, a few issues with this, Mike.
Yep.
At this point, obviously, you're aware, you're aware of all, but the town is not taking dedication to the road, am I correct with that?
Yeah, that's kind of the elephant in the room, right? Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so based on that, I don't know how we can give a final approval to section 2, which would be approving the road when section 1 isn't even been approved yet, that's number one. Number two, drainage on this retention area there?
Yep.
It's in back of four lots, well, at a private subdivision, the drainage would have to be isolated to one lot, it can't be spread over four. That's their policy for quite a while.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and check if those are, maybe because they're open space, I don't recall off the top of my head if those are separate lots, I think that was an open space originally to be dedicated to the town of Huxter.
Well, that leads me into the next part of the thing.
Yep.
That part, I think the feeling is, I know you got to want to fight this, but this thing, if it's going the direction I'm seeing it, it needs to be an HOA.
And?
And I know, I know Mr. Thomas doesn't want to do that at this point, but I can't see any other way to do this. The town does not want to take dedication, this water drainage from section 2, excuse me, drains over and flows over to the pond in section 1, am I right?
That's correct.
Okay, so that is that, that is one giant drainage facility.
Correct.
That should all be under an HOA, and it looks like the town wants to take dedication of the open space out of it.
No, I agree with you.
See what I'm saying?
You know, I understand completely, and I think, you know, the intention, actually, I think out of necessity, if even one lot were to be sold, or ownership to transfer from Mr. Thomas, an HOA must be formed, but at this point, where it's at today, and into the near future, excuse me, the intent would be that it be owned by, you know, one individual, and therefore everything can be private infrastructure. I don't want to speak for you, Tom, but I believe if the condition were to be put in place, that if any unit were to be sold, then, you know, proof of an HOA forming would be required, again, I think that would be required out of necessity, you know, and if the board is dead set that that's the only way to move forward, then, you know, we have, we ask to come back after we have an opportunity to discuss, but, you know, I think with maintaining this, you know, ownership of, you know, all 126, including section 2, to be under the ownership of one individual, I don't know that an HOA would be needed at this time, but I agree, in the future, if any of those lots, you know, that weren't owned by Tom near the pond, would absolutely be an HOA, as well as the road, as well as other utilities, so we've understood that, but the intent was.
Well, we were working on section 1, that discussion did come up, and we kind of went along with that, with the assumption of it being a little different.
Right, and I think that was the intent, because markets change.
So now we're going along with this.
Right, now we're not kind of catching up, it's trading, I get it, now, this is a new section, and new things have come to light, so I understand the town's position and want to take a different look at it, we're not arguing that, you know, in the event that ownership were to transfer from Mr. Thomas, that an HOA absolutely must be formed, short of that, we are intent to maintain it as private up until that point.
Okay, I can hear you, but again, I'm going to reiterate, I don't believe the town wants to take dedication of section 1's drainage, you know.
Oh, absolutely understood, so, yeah, absolutely, all section 1 and section 2 would need to be private.
So that makes it difficult to keep section 2 when it's actually drainage going to section 1, and that there, four, one, two, you've got four lots of drainage facility in the back over here, that is, that doesn't mix up, we just did a whole project slightly there recently, and they have to change it.
First, Tom, can you talk to them? Tom's saying that's the one report, you want to ensure you're on the table and have discussion, come back in a couple weeks.
Keep having an HOA with one owner.
Yeah, and that, that's the issue, is that with the one owner, it's, with there being one owner of all the lots, and the right of way, and the open space, all under 800 Phillips Road LLC, I guess you can create it and what you do with entities, but apparently it's all one owner, and I don't know if you can form an HOA with no association, just one entity. And that's, you know, section 1, section 2, all under the ownership of 800 Phillips Road LLC.
Why is there a one owner?
Because the units aren't being offered up for sale, at this point.
So there's a better change in the original approval of the subdivision?
The subdivision was filed, they are individual lots, each lot pays their taxes as if every single lot was owned by a separate individual standing in person, but Tom Thomas retains ownership and then rents those units.
I think the understanding of the original approval was that these were all lots for sale.
That was, I think, the original intent, this goes back, you know, pre-COVID, I know the economics of the project changed.
So again, it sounds like we have to revisit.
We did come back to this planning board with section 1 specifically, I think when the town became aware of this issue arising, and I know it was presented to the board, and at that time, there was no objection to going forward with one ownership. And I understand this is a, you know, it's not a simple path, but I think this is the path that the developer sees as the most feasible way to move forward. So if, you know, if there's no wiggle room or ability to add conditions to approval, mandating an HOA is formed, if a separate entity were ever, you know, maintained ownership of a parcel, you know, we'd have to maybe request that this application be tabled, so we can kind of regroup and come back.
Well, I think at this point, you know, again, that's what we're going to have to do, is to just table this then, and regroup, because the issues that I just brought up are concerns, you know, look at, drainage needs to be on one parcel, separate from, you know, a group like that, can't be on several lots, that drainage does flow into section 1.
Yep.
Which then creates an issue in that area too, so now the town's got jurisdiction over the whole thing, and at this point, I don't think that's the direction I want to go with it.
I, yeah, I agree.
Based on that, before, it was going to be for sale units.
Yep.
And not going in that direction, I think we turned it around, so I think this thing's got to get tabled until this.
Understood.
All gets resolved. Again, section 2, I don't feel we can approve dedicated road in section 1, the town isn't taking dedication in section 1, makes sense? See what I'm saying?
I believe it would be willing to accept that the town would not take dedication to that road, that it would be a private road. We understand that, in speaking with the town, you know, they're not, at this point, willing to take dedication of section 1, let alone section 2, so everything would be private, the road, the stormwater, the utilities, and even if an HOA were to form, Mr. Thomas would be a majority, you know, member of that HOA, and with that, bear the responsibility for any maintenance that would be necessary. It's, I get an HOA is a document, a formal document, that lays out, you know, what is covered and what isn't covered, but at this point, everything is covered by the developers, and will continue to do so.
But it's still individual purposes.
They are, everyone, they are.
They happen to be owned by one individual.
Correct.
But it doesn't matter, they would all have to be part of an HOA, so he's the only HOA number, but he represents all individual parcels. We tend to have this thing as isn't individual, single family residential parcels, like we're sold, and now I'm hearing to say it's already a credit road, so what I'm hearing is that this is a completely different development than what was originally approved.
I believe.
And I would think that this could start from the process over.
Yeah, I think, at this point, I think we just need to table it, and I think we need to get the town and the applicant together on this thing, and knock out the details on it, because there's no way out, I think we can improve this thing, see what we can.
Okay, I'm not going to change.
I'll make a motion, we table the Belatera proposal.
Do you think?
I've got to set a time, I don't think, well, April 4?
I don't think you can, April 4, I think you need the second, to, you know, to return our mark.
What's that, reject?
Mark, it's a mark. I believe so, you know, we can touch base to the town and find a time to.
All right, I think the town needs to get together, be on the board, because we can't act if we don't see the town taking dedication to the roads and so on and so forth, that's the key to this thing. All the infrastructure, drainage, sewers, and so on.
Understood.
You know, okay, so we'll table it to, what was the date?
March 4th.
March 4th?
March 7th.
March 7th. Okay, I'll make a motion, we table it to March 7th.
I'll send it.
Okay, we have a second, and that'll give the applicant time to get together with the town, the attorneys, and so on and so forth, maybe we'll get this thing resolved interior.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, great.
The meeting is actually March 5th, right, Tuesday, 5th?
It's March 5th, is it?
Oh, no wonder, 23 is over.
Was it March, March 5th? Okay, March 5th. All right, and, Mike Ritchie?
Yeah.
You know, another good thing to add, when I was looking at the drawings you presented originally, I flipped and flopped, and I couldn't read, I didn't understand, I could read a blueprint, but I couldn't read those things.
Yeah, the plot maps.
Yeah, now, you've got match lines and everything, this is a whole lot better presentation here.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, next application, Vision. Vision Hyundai Huxter, located at 755 Bridge Road, the applicant, Robert Sanders, requesting preliminary and final site plan approval, and this is associated with a minor exterior improvement, and a closing of an existing covered area, associated with a 7.58 acre parcel, to the designated number, and this is located in an MC district, MC, median and intensive residential district, code of the town of Huxter. Yes, sir?
Good evening, Lynn Sweetrock with PNE Associates, here tonight on behalf of Vision Hyundai, so we're looking for preliminary final site plan for mainly, it's a new owner, and it's updating the building for upgrades to Hyundai's, Vision Hyundai, upgrades to the building, and closing a 1827 square foot existing overhang, and closing it, and then we're not proposing any utility improvements, just the building permit, application to improve interior improvements to the building, and exterior improvements to the building mainly, we're not proposing any site improvements, there's been some comments from staff that we received, that we provide written response, in fact, that we will, sounds like they wanted to look at the parking a little bit, and things like that, which, which we agreed to do on behalf of the review, and we did do, there were some comments about just utilities existing at the building, and we have, we have been reviewing those, and we did provide a plumbing plan today, and we have been coordinating, we can't, we'll make sure all the internal plumbing and everything is consistent, so it works, and basically, there's whole building plans prepared for it, so we'll be, you know, upon the plan board's review, we'd be looking to apply for building permit to improve the building as well as the internally and externally.
Yeah, is that kind of like what they did over, it's like just the entrance before you go in the garage?
Yeah, it's basically, it's basically just facade improvements, they're doing it to all of them. I didn't print out big, big ones, but I do have the existing Hyundai's sort of a bluer, sort of a blue look, and the new is sort of more of a, of a gold look.
We additioned?
I don't know if I got it, I did try to provide it with the PRC, but I could pass these out to the lobby.
You want to just slide them down, or just give an idea?
I mean, these are, so, you know, the blue is sort of this, they're sort of hot up.
Yeah, okay.
And this, this, I did send out sort of this perspective view, that's harder to see, but it sort of gives you an idea of like the exterior, that's, this is the existing proposed, sort of, the limits of the building changes.
So it's a minor change, basically, we're just enclosing that overhang area, correct?
Just enclosing the area that, I mean, it was overhang now, I mean, it's just going to be enclosed, and the drainage isn't changing in there, they'll just be covered and basically heated, so they can use it as more space, and, so like I said, they're doing this with all of them, it's a new owner for all of them.
Anybody, any questions, any concerns?
No changes to the signage, but also some.
There will be changes to the signage, but that's on my stuff, so they'll be coming back supper later.
Okay. The Hyundai ECM metal building panels, is that the, what's that? Sorry? On the applications, this facade improvements, including the installation, Hyundai ECM metal building panels, and new, that's changed the air curtain walls, what is that?
I'm not, that's materials, I'd have to look and see exactly, but I think that's what's called out on the plans here, I don't know exactly what materials it is, but that's sort of what they call out.
Is that the material surround elevations?
Yeah, it's consistent, yes.
Drizzle change in the shape of the building, it's just changing the color.
Just really just changing the color, and, you know, the glass is, you know, still maybe consistent as well as that now, so, they are adding EV stations for, you know, reasons to make sure they have enough EV stations to keep going forward as well, which is, we put in there that they're going to add some more down, around, they have EV stations now, but there'll be, some of the improvements will be added as well. improvements will be added as well.
All right, anybody? Again, this is a public hearing, Casey Brown, the gentleman here wishes to speak in different order against this. Is that something? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, turn it back up. Anybody any concerns? Some of them, we just, we have to. Yeah, we just, yeah, Garber did that, they closed in the front there, just basically. Go see around it.
The town wants the plan board to consider request the applicant, Robert Sanders, to construct minor exterior improvements and closing the existing covered area associated with Vision Hyundai Webster located at seven fifty-five Bridge Road, seven point five five acre parcel, having S D L number zero seven nine point one seven dash one dash two three point one one. The plan board classifies proposed actions as type two action under section six seventeen point five C nine, the state of the review regulations, and therefore is not subject to further review.
Okay, our motion needs a second.
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right, we're good with that. Make a motion, just, actually, just as presented, there really isn't. Would you be okay with that, Josh? Just, you make a motion for it, just as presented, there really is nothing technical in there. Or maybe one thing that should be in, I'll make a motion for preliminary approval, that we accepted Hyundai application as presented. Subject to sewer department, highway department. You know, you're, you talked about it, they wanted a drain maybe in there, if you ask to go through your oil separator, I don't know.
Yeah, that's fine, provided that's fine. So that they've got, we can, they can coordinate with the oil lock separator.
Okay, so the applicant coordinates with sewer and, sewer and, actually, highway department, then who controls that part?
Well, it's a state road, so.
Well, I think there's a drain, you know, the drain going inside there, remember?
Yeah, that would be more of the sanitary sewer department.
Okay, so that would be the sewer department. So the applicant to put, really, with the sewer department regarding any, any drainage interior changes.
I, I think there might be a little bit of confusion, because our sewer department was contacted and given a request to connect to the sanitary sewer system, so I think that's where some of the sewer related comments were coming from, but it sounds as though you're.
We're working, we're trying to figure out where, yeah, they had an issue and we're working through and it's gonna be part of these improvements to fix that. We'll be working with the, the sewer goes out, it goes out the back. So, the sewer's over here. I don't think they were, it's not a, so we're working on pulling it.
This one's opposed to public, public sewer?
Yeah, it's in the easement. There's a sewer, main hall, and easement, and that's where they're lying. They're also, they can't, everybody, they couldn't find anything out on their own, so.
Okay, we'll just leave, we'll be out like that, the applicant, well, keep while you're in contact with the sewer department prior to a building that, the energy. Okay, you know, that way, you've got a result before you can go in. It's part of the target, yeah. All right, just that, the motion needs a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we need to do one for final, make a motion for final approval, subject to all preliminary approvals, it's subject to all, oh, yeah, they put that, put in there, any, any PRC cons? If there were? Yes, that'd be the motion for final. Sorry? Oh, yeah, wow. Significant construction will be commenced within one year, and that date being February sixth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, you have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's it. All right, you're outside. Thank you. Well, so far, they've been easy.
My name is Scott Andrews, I live at ten eighty-three Bright Street Way, request approval to have a.
You have to have to read, have to read.
Application first.
I'm sorry. Well, that's Bright Street Way accessory building located at ten eighty-three Bright Street Way, the applicant is Scott Andrews, he's requesting preliminary final approval, associated with construction of an eight hundred and sixteen square foot accessory building. This is located at a point seven three acre parcel and located in an R two, single-family residential district under two sixty-nine eleven, three fifty-one and three fifty thirteen, and voted to the town. Now we're behind.
My name is Scott Andrews, I live at ten eighty-three Bright Street Way, and request approval to have constructed a accessory building, which would be tucked into the area where my cousin's shed is now, the wooded lot, and have the shed move over to the northeast portion of the property, all within the stop bags required.
Okay, there's a shed there, I, I, if someone was to go over and look at it, you got a, you can say shed back there.
No, no, you're right. It's ten by sixteen.
I'm sorry?
It's a ten by sixteen.
Ten by sixteen, yes, I have it listed. So you propose to move that?
I'd like to move that to the northeast property, use that for gardening, plant stuff over there, and have, basically, I wanna get my garage cleaned out so I can put all my tools, a lot of equipment, snow blowers, generators, and store stuff inside the accessory building.
Okay, so what you're proposing actually is eight hundred and something square feet. I'm calculating it out, eight hundred, I forgot where you're. Maximum that would be allowed would be six hundred and thirty-three square feet. So the eight hundred can't happen now. There's, apparently, there's been a lot of flooding, drainage issues.
There had been, my neighbor, Mike Fairchild, when I first moved in, advised me of flooding in that area, where he saw, after the last thirty-three years, it came up about where his children's playground areas. And just last week, we had that happen. And I photographed all the area where I'm looking at, and nothing was underwater at that point, where I would put these buildings. I still plan to put maybe two, three or four more inches of stone, get it up higher involved.
So if you move the shed, you're putting it more into the wet area, correct? Now, isn't that area, is that a wetland area, is that the shed?
Um, it's a flood plain.
Is it?
Yes.
I don't think that'd be.
There are some low areas in the lot where we bought, and I propose to put some drain tunnel there, right to the creek though. The backyard, from west to east, is, is graded down right to the street. So I can run up and go straight back to the street.
So you don't worry, a hundred-year flood plain on this property comes up into, it's about twenty feet off the patio, roughly. So the entire area where the shed would be, this building would be placed as well as a hundred-year flood plain. I don't think this is gonna be too simple project to prove. I don't like, you know what? This is a public hearing, I don't, there's any motion to speak. Well, you know what, why don't we, see, you know, say, would you like to comment on it? Sure. Sure, go ahead. Sure, go right up, use your name and address.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some handouts.
Sure, you can pass them over there.
Uh, I only have seven.
That's okay.
This is just my comments as well as pictures. Maybe helpful in determining a path. Any extra, Mike?
I'm sorry, Scott, I mean, I have mine and seven, so, sorry. Again, good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Fairchild. My wife and I live at ten eighty-one Bright Street Way in Webster. We've lived there for thirty-six years. I'm here to express opposition to the proposed plans for a large accessory building that our neighbor at ten eighty-three Bright Street Way wants to erect next to my property. Currently, there's a one hundred and sixty foot, square foot shed, ten feet by sixteen feet, next to our property, that he plans to move to the northeast part of the lot, as he mentioned, closer to the creek, and replace it with a permanent eight hundred and sixteen square foot accessory building. The accessory building is twenty-four feet by thirty-four feet, with a peak height of, I believe, approximately fourteen feet. That's five times larger than the current shed. From a full perspective, it would be large enough to accommodate four average-sized cars. Presently, if you look around our neighborhood, there's not one other accessory building on Bright Street Way. The reason? Bright Street Way is a small, quiet residential neighborhood. The residents there want nothing more than to preserve and maintain the residential atmosphere, appearance, and character of Bright Street Way. Adding this large accessory building will not achieve that goal. Every neighbor that I've spoken to agrees. Note that I've documented other reasons of our opposition to this proposal utilizing the town's online form. In addition, images and drone video has been submitted via a thumb drive for the plan board to review. The drone video is very telling and shows the extreme flooding that can occur in the backyard of ten eighty-three Bright Street Way, where the accessory building is proposed to sit. In our thirty-six years of living on Bright Street, we've learned that mother nature must be respected. The creek loves neighborhood backyards and the large one hundred and fifty-foot cottonwood trees and fall. Using good common sense is key with regard to one's property. There is no doubt that I would never build a structure of value in my flood-prone backyard. Please refer to the pictures in the handout if you don't mind, I believe this is starting on page three. On March eighth, twenty seventeen, trees blew over due to a major wind event in our backyard. Fortunately, none of the large cottonwood trees came down. Major cleanup was required, as the pictures show. A month later, on May first, twenty seventeen, due to a heavy rain, the creek overflowed and flooding occurred. The last picture in that packet, looking northeast, shows the backyards of our property and part of ten eighty-three Bright Street Way. Now, you may be thinking, what does this have to do with my neighbor's accessory building? Well, if any structure, including an accessory building, is constructed in a heavily treed area that is particularly flood-prone, what you see in these pictures can have a major negative impact on that structure, the neighbor's property, and ultimately, my property. I have five more bullets, and then I'm done. Number one, the large accessory building, if approved, would negatively impact the beauty and serenity of our backyard, as well as the monetary value of our property. No one wants to look at their backyard and see a large, unsightly structure sitting along the lot line. Number two, a large structure, such as an accessory building, could exacerbate flooding and drainage in the backyard at ten eighty-three Bright Street Way, which would impact neighboring properties, including ours. Number three, the creek width years ago was three to four feet. It is now eight to ten feet, and even more in some areas. Erosion of the creek is a serious concern. A large accessory building could divert floodwater, change creek flow, and exacerbate erosion. Number four, there is not sufficient space on either side of the house at ten eighty-three Bright Street for large construction vehicles to access the backyard, and we certainly do not want damage to our property due to vehicles, equipment, or construction workers utilizing our property for their convenience. Number five, in the fall, winter, and spring, backyard turf is sometimes wet and fragile. Driving a vehicle on the wet turf can be problematic. Installing a paved surface to the backyard to access the, the building is not an option due to easements on either side of the house. That's all I have. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think there's, looking at the drawing, there's sixteen feet, I believe, on either side, on either side of the house, up to the lot line, and facing the house on the right side, you've got, you've got a quite large tree there. So how would you, what would be your, this thing moved anywhere, how would you get down there?
There's nothing, there won't be any gear, but.
There won't be what?
This is strictly for storage, probably, my tools, toolboxes, like I said, law equipment, snow blowers, generators, all the outdoor furniture, we have no space in our garage because of the fact that we can't, the easement does not allow for extension on our garage. We're looking to get some of our cars back in the garage.
I don't recall, I don't, excuse me, I don't recall us moving anything this large in, you know, on, on a, on a regular residential lot. I don't ever recall, I mean, generally, something that size is on, you know, a few acres of land or something of that nature. Not with the journeying neighbors, which I have to agree, the visual of it, looking out the yard, from next door, either side, seeing a big shed in the back there, does block the view, number one. Number two, we've seen the pictures of the water draining down through there? I don't think that's appropriate to have a structure within that waterway. Anybody any concerns or issues?
I, I agree with you, the, and go over there, I can look at the, the whole neighborhood and also the neighborhood behind me. The shed he's got there now, you know, stands out like a silver phone, and that's eight hundred and sixteen, you know? Now we're, we're down to the size of that, you know, totally off the case. Totally off the case.
Yeah.
I would be willing to reduce the square footage of the building, and I also have pictures to show when the flooding happened last week, that there was, there was no water near the shed, and.
Well, the concern with the flooding is not necessarily what you see on, I saw it last week or I saw it on a last year basis, this area has actually been delineated, like female, for the width and where the actual floods are located. So the building is gonna be a little bit, like, for, I mean, I've never seen the water get that high, it just hasn't happened. So we have a structure that we have. And again, I would have to agree with everybody else, but this size building, too, if you see on large lots, more than three acres, doesn't really seem to fit compared to here. Even at size, at this point, I don't know, we're discretion, I would, it'd be bigger than what's above, so.
And also, and your environmental, you did mark that it's not in a one hundred-year flood plain, which really it would be. Also, that's what I've never, um, uh, no. Okay, so. Can we close? Here? It's too big. All right, so, all right, you're ready, son, agree with it. I don't think we're gonna be approving this, and I mean, as presented, yeah, I mean, I think you've got the one there, that's an adequate shed for the backyard, there is a stand, it's a bike pit. And you're getting, this is a public hearing, so if there was anywhere else we should speak?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a thumb drive of, my, my wife actually took a video of the flooding a couple weeks ago.
We've got, we've, we've seen.
Well, no, this is from my wife, it's not one that you've seen.
Uh-huh.
And there is a water, standing water, in front of the current shed, if you'd like to see it.
Can you show that again? It might be good to see it.
It's very great.
Yes, it's only 10 seconds, and she was getting rained on, so it was pretty quick.
Okay.
I believe it's the second one on there, not the first one. One, one was about 800 meg, the other one was about 19 meg.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that was in the portion, yeah. That's it there. I was wondering about the roof a little bit. Okay, I think, I think what we need to do is, I think, deny the application as presented. I'll make a motion to deny the application as presented based on the information, the size, and the, even with the location of the proposed, relocation of the proposed existing shed. And by even more into the wet area.
Chairman, excuse me, if I was to come back and ableist, come back with a smaller sized building and not put the shed over in the northeast corner, would that be considered?
Yeah, based on your, on the acreage, you've got, there wouldn't be a lot of shed, but the shed that's existing, to me, is a very substantial shed for a backyard in a residential area. Most sheds people put in are eight by 10, 10 by 12, things of that nature, they're small. This is pretty good size. I can't tell you, you can't come back with it. I mean, that, that would be provocative to do that, but where it would go, based on where the flood plain is, where the water is, you know?
It comes up and it, right now, there's, there's no water back there at all, you know, it flooded and it goes right back down, so, rain tile and flood gates.
So, that's, again, that's designated as a wetland area, you know, flood plain area. All right, I'm going to make a motion to deny the application as presented. Do you have a second?
Mr. Kishani. Mr. Mixel.
Aye.
Mr. Mrs. Kamal. Mr. Posel.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Wong.
Aye.
That's it. The applicant wants to prove something with her, the way I see it, it's in the successive use of the property. I think the doors are totally open there. All right, across the background, anything else? That's it? Okay, I guess that's it for the scene, if that's coming up. Thank you.